It is six o'clock, Monday, October sixth, twenty twenty-five. I'll call this meeting to order of the Peru Common Council and the Peru City Hall Council Chambers. If you'd please rise and follow me in the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the invocation by Pastor Brent Wedding.
Father, we thank you for your goodness and your mercy upon us. We pray that you would bless this meeting tonight, that you would bless the council, the mayor, the attorney. God, we pray that you would bless the city clerk, that you would bless all of those that are leading our city, making decisions for legislation and for the running of our city. We pray, Lord, that this meeting would be conducted with integrity and wisdom and excellence. We pray for all of our law enforcement, our fire department, first responders, the city department, the street department, everybody that works and volunteers and serves this city. We pray your blessings upon them, bless our school systems, our children, bless our churches. We just pray for continued blessing and safety upon this community. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Fisher?
Here.
Huber?
Here.
Murphy? Sajdatchne?
Here.
Stevenson?
Here.
Ulri?
Here.
Thank you. First order of business will be the reading and correction, the minutes from our regular meeting on September eighth.
I make a motion that we suspend the rules and adopt the minutes as written.
Roll call.
Fisher?
Yes.
Huber?
Yes.
Murphy? Sajdatchne?
Yes.
Stevenson?
Yes.
Ulri?
Yes.
Anderson?
Thank you. We'll move to the committee liaison reports. Councilman Stevenson, start with you, please.
The Peru Utilities Board approved the policy for the journeyman retention premium. They also approved the surplus equipment disposal and approved the maintenance office generator replacement. That's all that I have.
Thank you. Councilman Huber.
Yes, I talked to Kelly at the airport this morning. Right now, they're still working on the finishing up the crack ceiling on the runways. And they also have a bus trip planned for November the first that is to the Kalamazoo Air Zoo. And I don't really know what that is, but it looks interesting. Costs seventy-five dollars to anyone that wants to go. Gives you, I'm just going to read this so people will know. Group round-trip transportation, it's a fifty-five passenger luxury motor coach, admission to the air zoo, a rest stop in South Bend for dinner, complimentary donuts, coffee and juice before departure. And if you are interested, please contact Shay at City Hall at the City Clerk Treasurer's Brian at the Street Department, they're, they're also sealing cracks in the city. And they are going to start a leaf pickup on the twenty-seventh of this month. And that's pretty much everything I have from him. And then, last but not least, Greg at Animal Control said that he's going to be part of the artisans fair at the Pickers Place on October eighteenth from ten to four. And we currently have five dogs at the shelter and one in foster ca- foster care and one in home trial for adoption. And that's all I have to report.
Thank you. Councilman Sajdatchne.
Yeah, first, I attended the Public Board of Works meeting on September sixteenth. Just wanted the public to be aware of the annual removal memorial march on Sunday, October nineteenth at eleven AM. The march will start at the tribal headquarters at eighty West Sixth and proceed down Miami Street. And also, I'd like the public to be aware that vengeance leader, remember David Wood, they're holding a bucket shake to benefit Larry Gamble, who was in a motorcycle accident in Peru. And that'll be on October eleventh from ten to two PM, intersection of Main Street and On, also on Tuesday ninth, September sixteenth, I attended the Miami Council, County Council meeting. And items for action, the North Miami Industrial Park, I think they're designating three hundred ninety-eight thousand dollars for that development. They, there was discussion on the Wabash Road completion, road conversion pavement, pavement, somewhere in the neighborhood of nine hundred ninety-six thousand dollars for that converting gravel to blacktop. And then, for the public's benefit, the budget public hearing is scheduled for October fourteenth for the county at the guard room at seven PM. The adoption hearing, it will be October twenty-eighth, twenty, yeah, this year, at seven PM, guard room also. And then, I attended the Board of Commissioners with Tim. And just wanted to point out that Corey Rozier made a presentation on approving and adopting the damage prevention ordinance, Perfima and Indiana DNR. And also Kerry Rurrell discussed the Yule River Cemetery Road improvements coming up. And so, that's all I have.
Thank you. Councilman Fisher.
I attended the Board of Public Works meeting on September sixteenth. That's where they approved payment of claims and city payroll, et cetera. Peru Utilities Board meetings, I've attended those on September seventeenth and October first to hear discussions on various projects such as the long-term control plan that has been going on for a while and will continue to go on, what the latest architectural or, or, you know, changes, engineering changes in that. They talk about power outages and things of that nature. Miami County Economic Development Authority, I attend their, attended their board meeting as a liaison from the city council on the tenth. And they talk about the status of very, various economic development activities out around the base, well, in the county in general, but also with the city. I'm on the Miami County Recycling District Board, and we met on the fifteenth to go over, you know, things like the vendor price increases, you know, vendor approval or problems with the vendor, so on and so forth. Rediscovered downtown Peru on the liaison with that group, and they met on September eleventh to discuss second Saturday activities. They're the ones that deal with the Cold Porter Festival, facade grant updates, key building updates, alley activations, and stuff like that. So, you know, as a, being on the city council, it's important to be there. So, we, we also provide funding support for that group and like to know how it's being utilized. Other liaison assignments, I'm with the Incentive Review Committee and the Miami County nine eleven Central Dispatch, and also the Committee on Wage Negotiation, and none of those met in September. And then, the last thing I have here, the Miami County Commissioners Meeting, as Pete said, I attended that on the fifteenth and the sixth. You know, sometimes they vote on things that's going to impact the city, and so I like to be there for that. Just like today, they, they voted on changing ambulance service for the area, and we'll see where that takes us. And the Yule River Road, when they put in the sewer and water out to the silo, that project, they damaged that road. And so, they have an agreement from Makita Economic Development to repair that road. And over two years, Makita's going to reimburse the county for that. That's, that's what's going on there. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilwoman Ulri.
Okay, the Plan Commission did not meet, the Cable Board and Tax Abatement Review Committee also did not meet. So, the Civic Center, we did have a meeting prior to the Fall Shin Dig, and, which was more just discussion of that. And then, we ended up having the Fall Shin Dig, and it was a great turnout.
Thank you. Thank you to all the council owners. I do appreciate you being involved and taking your assignments seriously. It's nice to hear these reports. Thank you once again. Moving into old business, we do have a presentation from Baker Tilly on the twenty-twenty-six budget. We have Nicole here. She made it.
Yeah, I just made this. Sorry about the lateness. I had some car troubles and figured I'd make it in color high water. Is there a way to plug in my laptop?
Yeah, he's sitting right back there.
That's the way.
I think you are all familiar enough with me to remember who I am, but my name's Nicole Grzbowski. I'm a manager at Baker Tilly, and I am the financial advisor to the city. So, we've been involved in the whole budget process, assisting Andrea from the start. And I am here to just give you an overview and presentation on twenty-twenty-six budget and what the results mean for the city. Topics for discussion for tonight is just a look back on some historical financial information, kind of sets the scene for the twenty-twenty-six budget, and then obviously going over the twenty-twenty-six budget. Historical financial information. So, the graph in front of you shows the last five years of actual data for the city. The purple bar represents the cash balance for all budgeted funds, the red bar represents the revenues, and the blue teal bar represents the expenditures. As you can see, the purple bar has slowly been increasing each year, which is exactly what we want to see for the city. You'll also notice that the red bar has outpaced the blue bar in every single year as well when you look back, which just means that your budget is balanced and the city is bringing in more revenues than they are expending your budget. This is just another view of that graph. So, for our clients, we typically like to see funds at a cash balance of fifty percent of their operating balance, which is that black line there. And what that means is that if all cash were to stop tomorrow and the funds wouldn't receive another dollar, they would still be able to operate for six months before running out of cash reserves and bringing in additional revenue. This is important because a lot, or majority of the revenues that the city brings in is property taxes, and those only come twice a year. They come in June and December. So, giving that six-month wait period, even though the city does bring in other, other revenues on top of property taxes, it's just a good goal balance that we like to see our clients at. The red bar is the absolute minimum that we'd like to see a fund at, and that is fifteen percent of operating balance or operating expenditures, and that represents two months. So, you'd be able to operate on cash reserves for two months. And as you can see, when you compare all budgeted fund cash balances, you are well above, the city of Peru is well above the fifty percent that we'd like to see most funds at. This next graph gives you a historical look back at the net assessed value for the city of Peru in the fire territory. As you can tell, twenty twenty through twenty twenty-two, net assessed value kind of remains stagnant. But in the last three years, you can see each bar for the city and the fire territory has slowly increased, and you'll see that trend continue into twenty twenty-six as well. This is a very number-heavy slide. I know it kind of makes your eyes cross. This just kind of, this just shows the levy, which is property taxes that are received by the city and fire territory versus circuit breaker credits, which for those who aren't familiar, that is a credit for the taxpayer, essentially limits how much property taxes they can pay based on their gross assessed value of their home. So, it is lost revenue for the city, but it is a credit for the taxpayer. And as you can tell, twenty twenty-four, or twenty twenty-one through twenty twenty-four for the civil side remained around twenty-five percent of your levy, and that's, that's twenty-five percent of your gross property taxes that have been lost due to circuit breaker credits. You'll notice in twenty twenty-five, that jumped from twenty-five percent to thirty-four percent. In twenty twenty-four, I believe the county made a change to their local income tax and their property tax relief credit structure, which then affects your circuit breaker. So, that's why that jump happened in twenty twenty-five. And with the implementation of SEA one, unfortunately, we do expect that percentage to increase in the next several years as well. Similar story for the fire territory as well. In the later columns, we compare the assessed value, which has seen growth every year besides twenty twenty-two. And typically, when you see your assessed value grow, that's when you see your tax rate decrease. And the only reason why you see your tax rate increase for twenty twenty-five, even when your assessed value grew, is because the city implemented a park bond to improve the golf course on, within the city. So, that is funded by property taxes, and that's why, within that year, even though your assessed value went up, you still saw a slight increase in your tax rate. Historical information, since twenty twenty, the city has absorbed twelve-point-nine million dollars of lost revenue due to circuit breaker. Again, it's a great credit relief for the taxpayer, but also lost revenue on the city side. For twenty twenty-five, actual credit losses between the city and the fire territory was a total of three-point-one million dollars, which was a forty percent increase from twenty twenty-four, again, due to that PTRC tax credit change from the county. Actual credits for twenty twenty-six will not be known until shortly before tax bills are mailed in the spring of twenty twenty-six. However, just due to the SEA implementation, we are expecting that to, to increase as well. There are many different estimates out there. There's DLGF, there's LSA. We go with the more conservative route just to be safe. And then, the last bullet point there, circuit breakers for twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one were all slightly below two million. Twenty twenty-two through twenty twenty-four jumped up within the low two million range, and twenty twenty-five jumped up above three million for circuit breaker credits. Moving on to the twenty twenty-six budget, which is what the city council will be reviewing and adopting tonight. Just an overview of the process. Each year, the city meets with department heads, who then go through line-by-line items to develop their budgets. Obviously, the goal is to have a balanced budget, so we're comparing the expenses to revenues. And I actually had the privilege of sitting in on the department head meetings this year, and there was a lot more detailed review this year, which is great. It's, it's something that helps reduce unneeded budgeting and really sees where you're actually spending your money. So, I know that, that process started a lot earlier this year, and it was very useful for the city in starting it so early. With twenty twenty-six being the first year of the implementation of SEA one, the city worked diligently to identify where they could reduce costs, reallocate resources, maybe shift some funding here and there, help prioritize capital needs, and then overall consideration of how to bring in additional revenues for the city due to the SEA implementation. Obviously, this is the first year, and as each year goes on, the SEA impacts are going to slowly increase. So, although this was the first year, it is going to have to continue to have this process through twenty thirty-one, which is the last final phase in of the SEA impacts. General comments on the twenty twenty-six budget. Property tax growth for all units in Indiana was capped at four percent this year, which is similar to how it's been in the last few years. This was capped within the SEA one legislation. Without that cap, holistic growth within Indiana probably would have been five-point-six percent. For Peru, the certified levy between all civil property tax funds is just over five-point-six million, and the certified levy between all fire territory funds is just over four-point-three million. After estimated circuit breaker, oh my, text is cut off there. After estimated circuit breaker and SEA one impacts, the net new tax revenue across both the civil and fire territory is, I believe, just above six-point-four million. Twenty twenty-six circuit breaker estimates, again, like I said, there are a lot of different estimates out there, but between all of them, it's about three-point-seven million for twenty twenty-six. Like, the preliminary increases are mainly due to SEA one. So, just from twenty twenty-five to twenty twenty-six, that's a six-hundred-thousand-dollar increase over one year. The twenty twenty-six net assessed value has been certified. So, there was a little fun thing that happened last week was the Miami County published their certified net assessed value report when we were going through the budget process, and then last week, they unsubmitted it. And you don't know why, but your best guess is anybody's best guess. So, just to be safe, within the last week, we went into gateway and we actually utilized the twenty twenty-five certified net assessed value, because we knew what that amount was. We didn't know if they were changing Peru's net assessed value or another units, but just to be safe. So, what you'll see on your budget ordinance tonight is a much higher tax rate being adopted than what the city will actually see, because when the DLGF reviews it, they'll reduce those levy amounts to what is within the city's maximum levy. And I'll go through the, the tax rates here as well. So, for twenty twenty-six, the civil side saw a twenty-three-point-nine percent increase in net assessed value, which is massive. I mean, on the previous slides, you were seeing six percent. So, this is a huge year for the city, and hopefully, we continue to see that growth. That means that the estimated twenty twenty-six tax rate for the civil side is about, is going to be about one-point-five-three-five compared to the twenty twenty-five rate of one-point-eight-four-nine. Similar, the, the fire territory net assessed value also increased within twenty-three percent, which brings that estimated tax to decrease to about zero-point-eight-four-eight compared to the twenty twenty-five rate of one-point-zero-zero-one. So, when your net assessed value grows, your tax rates are going to go down.
Nicole, so, but if the net assessed rates go up, the taxes, well, we don't know how that's going to be impacted, but, you know, you've got higher amounts on which the taxes. So, I know it's, it's, it's good for the coffers, but, you know, not good for the citizens if, if the tax rates or the tax also goes up.
If the tax also goes up, you're also probably going to see a higher circuit breaker loss as well, because the people, your citizens are going to reach that cap faster. So, there's pros and cons of both sides, but at least with net assessed value growth, you're seeing your tax rates decrease. And in the last four years, we haven't seen the city's net assessed value decrease at all. It wasn't since twenty twenty-two. So, we're seeing good trends on the city side, which then is also great for the fire This is just a historical comparison to give you an idea of where the city has spent budgets in the past. So, on the screen, you'll see twenty twenty-two through twenty twenty-four, the funds' actual spending versus the budgeted spending. Overall, for those funds are in the high eighty percent usage range. Typically, we'd like to see clients within the ninety-five percent range. Obviously, you're never going to have a perfect budget, but ideally, you would still have to do a couple additional appropriations during the year. It's not normal to never have to do an additional appropriation, because that means that you're just fluffing the budget just to have something, maybe if it comes up during the year. So, a couple additional appropriations are good. I don't know if Andrea would agree with that, because it means just more paperwork for her, but it is an option. And, and the use-it-or-lose-it budget mentality, that's not really an accurate mentality, because even if you don't budget for something in one year, you can still bring that budget line back when you actually need it. So, that was one thing that we focused on during the department head meetings this year, was what did you actually spend historically, and what are you budgeting now, and is there a disconnect, and why? So, this is that same graph of the historical cash balances, but with twenty twenty-five and twenty twenty-six estimated. I do want to point out that the numbers that are included in this graph assume that you're going to spend a hundred percent of your twenty twenty-five and twenty twenty-six budget. As you saw on the previous slide, that rarely happens. So, this is a worst-case scenario graph. You slightly see your cash balances go down, your revenues are slightly lower than your budgets. In twenty twenty-six, you see that gap grow a little bit more, and that's simply due to the SEA one impacts that are happening. But assuming this is the worst-case scenario, this certainly is not a bad picture for the city of Peru.
Nicole?
Yep.
SB one versus SEA one, is this the same thing?
It's the same thing. So, before it was enacted, it was SB one. And since it's enacted, it's Senate-enrolled ACT one now. It's interchangeable. Again, different view of the previous graph. You do see that blue line slightly tint down, but again, this is a worst-case scenario picture. And even with the worst-case scenario picture, the city of Peru is still well above that fifty percent mark. Certified net assessed value, I kind of hit on the numbers previously, but now you're seeing it in graph form. Those, that twenty twenty-six bar graph has grown exponentially. And we're weary to assume that that's going to continue, just with all the SEA one changes. But the city is fairly confident that the, with the progress that's being made by the city to, you know, increase development and whatnot, that trend will continue, even with SEA one. These next few slides are going to be more specific fund-focused. What we did was we took your main operating funds out of the total budgeted funds, and we wanted to look at them at an individual picture. So, starting with the general fund, this is the largest fund for the city. It houses most of the operational costs for a lot of the departments. And as you can see, the, the twenty twenty-five, sorry, starting off, the columns, the budget or the bar graph piece of it, that is the actual expenses paid in the twenty twenty-five and twenty twenty-six budgets. So, you're seeing a slight increase in twenty twenty-three, a slight decrease in twenty twenty-four, more increases in twenty-five and twenty-six. Again, this is assuming that you're spending all of the budget within this fund, and that's where you see where the increase continues in twenty twenty-six, the cash balance start to decrease towards that fifty percent line, but still, it's nineteen percent above it. So, you're still above that fifty percent line, even if you were to spend a hundred percent of that budget. Park Fund is the one fund that is probably hurting the most within the city. I do want to disclaim that the revenues that are showing within these numbers do not account for the recent alcohol sales that have been implemented in the golf clubhouse. So, this is absolutely the worst-case scenario. I do also want to mention that for the twenty twenty-six budget, we noticed that things were starting to decrease for the park. And what, one of the awesome things about doing your budget every year is that you can pick allocation percentages of where that property tax is going. So, we were able to look at all the funds receiving property taxes, identify which identify which funds were doing well enough to lose some of that property taxes going into that fund and reallocate that appropriately. So this graph is currently showing $20,000 shifted from the aviation fund into the park fund. Obviously, 2024 and 2025 were a little bit higher estimated expenses due to the operational issues that were at the golf course. But hopefully, in 2026, you start to see that budget go down because hopefully, things will start operating more efficiently, less repairs, less maintenance, and also, again, the unknown revenues that are to come due to the clubhouse improving. Again, dipping below the 50% line, but still above that minimum of 15, which again, which we can also assess if more additional property tax needs to be allocated to this fund in the future as well. The aviation fund is another fund that receives property taxes. And one thing that we were able to do this year during the department head meeting is to identify what costs we can shift to other funds that have funding availability specifically for capital pieces within aviation. And that's why you'll notice the 2025 budget is much higher than the 2026 budget because when we were going through that report for the city, we were kind of playing a game of Tetris of what funds and what funding can we shift to, to make a better outcome for the non-recurring expenses out of this fund. So even with losing that 20% or $20,000 of property tax in 2026, the aviation fund is still expected to be well above that 50% goal with that shift. The Public Safety Lit Fund. So this is not a property tax fund. This is a fund that is solely funded by local income tax revenues, which I'm sure everyone is probably aware of right now that the current local income tax structure is ceasing in 2028. The city of Peru does have the option to implement their own local income tax in 2027, to implement in 2028. However, until that happens, and even if that happens, this fund will no longer be receiving revenues because that new local income tax will go directly into the general fund. So all the cash reserves, all that 276% of the operating expenses, all that will stay in that fund until that fund is fully depleted. And then all the reoccurring budgets out of this fund will then need to be shifted to most likely the general fund. So that's also something to keep in mind is even though you see the general fund above the 50% mark, there will be budget shifts for some of that reoccurring expense come 2027 to 2028. This is a very healthy fund based on the local income tax that the city has received thus far. This is the other local income tax fund that is, was very blessed to receive increases in local income tax for the last couple years. This has been a great opportunity for the mayor and council to utilize these funds to make economic improvements for the city. This has been a huge benefit for a lot of capital planning that has been on the list for who knows how long, but finally, the funding is there and it's being used for that purpose. Unfortunately, again, this is one of the funds that, once the revenues are spent down, it will be no longer operating fund. So, but the, the thing about this fund is that there's not a lot of recurring expenses out of this fund. It's a lot of one-off capital expenses, so not as much budget will need to be shifted out of here. From when this is depleted, it'll be more of a project prioritization once that happens. Your Cumulative Capital Development Fund, your CCD fund, this is a property tax-backed fund. However, this is rate-driven. Your CCD rate is maxed out at the 5 cent mark. So when your net assessed value goes up, your property tax revenues within this fund will also go up, which is why you see those 2025 and 2026 budgets increase in those years because the net assessed value also increased in those years. Historically, there was barely anything spent out of this fund. There's no recurring items. So this is also another great fund to use for one-off capital expenses, probably something that will take the place of your CEDF fund for, for certain capital projects in the future. The last fund I'm going to hit on is the Fire Territory General Fund. This is a property tax fund, except it is a sep, it's considered a separate entity from the city. So it has a separate net assessed value, as you saw earlier, and therefore, separate operating and balanced budget process. As you can see, in 2024, there were some pretty high expenses due to some capital needs within the territory. 2025 slightly decreases. In 2026, the main priority for this fund was to increase personnel costs. And therefore, during that budgeting process, a lot of the other line items were able to identify where we could decrease, so the personnel costs could increase accordingly. This is one that I would recommend the city would monitor going forward. With the new legislation, there is an opportunity for the county to adopt an EMS fire safety tax that the fire territory could benefit from and receive an allocation for. So that is something that I would highly recommend the city start those conversations with the county to receive that additional revenue, starting in 2028. But until then, it's really a monitor as we go for this one. But again, still well above that 15% minimum line that we'd like to see. Beyond 2026, it's a matter of considering additional revenue sources. What can the city do to offset some of the expected SEA one impacts? Management continuing to engage in the long-term financial planning, which we do year over year with the city, to identify any future funding gaps to get ahead of schedule, reviewing and identifying operational efficiencies, similar to how we did this budget season, going line by line and really digging into the historical actuals and preparing your budget accordingly. Modifications and reductions in service, service levels if needed. Obviously, that's least pri, or that's the last thing that the city would want to do. Main, main other helpful thing would be project prioritization for the capital spending piece of it. Further than that, just closely monitoring estimated impacts. I feel like every day, I'm learning something new. So as we continue to go through the years, things are bound to change, and just staying on top of those changes and understanding them will be very helpful for the city. Any questions?
Nicole, I wanted to ask you. You mentioned earlier that we're spending 100% of the 2025 and 26 budget. So if we continue that, will the trend, you know, the revenue be, be lower?
They would. But that is, this graph assumes 100% of spending. Historically, you've only spent in the high 80s. So this is worst-case scenario picture is if you were to spend 100% of that budget for both years.
We don't want to spend 100%.
Yeah, typically, you don't. So it's either cut back on your budgeting and spend 100% of it or spend 80% of it. But then you don't really, then you don't really know an accurate picture going forward because you're assuming the whole budget. That's how, that's how DLGF reviews it, so.
Okay, thank you.
Question?
Thank you, Nicole.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you.
So council, you have before you Resolution 16 dash 2025 Peru Civil City Budget for 2026. Do we have a motion to consider?
I make a motion that we consider Resolution 16 dash 2025.
Second.
Roll call.
Huber?
Yes.
Murphy? Saad Duchney?
Yes.
Stevenson?
Yes.
Ori?
Yes.
Anderson?
Fisher?
Yes.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion from the council or questions that we might be able to answer for you?
Andrea, I wanted you, if you could maybe clarify on the back page, the public safety fund is, is over a million? What, what is that? Are we talking about the, the police force, the fire? Or what else is involved with that, the, the public safety?
The public safety is, currently is used on the police department alone.
Okay.
In putting this budget together, we recognize that our job is to present a budget which comes as closely to what we actually need to spend. And as you've seen, and over years past, we're in the high 80, 80%. So that leaves about 12%. What we do and what we are working hard to do is to make sure that the department heads come in, we review every line item in their department, and we take the approach that we don't need to have this use it or lose it attitude. If you need it, you'll get it. But we need to be honest about what we really need to spend. So I think in the coming years, you'll see those numbers get closer to that 100% instead of 80%, which is what our goal would be. But we work hard at the budget to make sure it's correct.
And I'll just say for the public, you know, this is not the first time we've seen this. You know, we had opportunities as a council to meet with, meet when we, with the individual department heads, with Baker Tilly, the mayor, and the clerk treasurer, and, and we went over that. And we had, this has been out for probably a month for, at least for us to ask questions on, go over, fine-tune it, and so on. So there's, there has been a lot of work that's gone into this, and, and I just wanted to share that.
Thank you. If there are no more questions, I would ask for a motion to adopt Resolution 16 dash 2025.
I would make a motion to adopt Resolution 16 dash 2025. Second.
And roll call.
Murphy? Saad Duchney?
Yes.
Stevenson?
Yes.
Ori?
Yes.
Anderson? Fisher?
Yes.
Huber?
Yes.
Thank you. Seeing nothing further under old business, move to new business. First item is Ordinance 22 dash 2025, an ordinance establishing the 2026 salaries of all elected officials of the city of Peru. Do we have a motion to consider?
I make a motion that we consider Ordinance 22 dash 2025.
Second.
And roll call.
Saad Duchney?
Yes.
Stevenson?
Yes.
Ori?
Yes.
Anderson? Fisher?
Yes.
Huber?
Yes.
Mur?
Thank you. You should have this before you. It is the salaries proposal for 2026 for the mayor, clerk treasurer, common council, and city court judge. You have any questions or discussion regarding this ordinance?
I don't have a question, but with the raises last year to the mayor and the clerk treasurer, I would have liked to see no raise to the mayor, clerk treasurer, or us on the council.
These increases represent 2.5%?
I know, I know it's not a lot, but.
Yes, thank you. Any more questions? Comments? If not, I would ask for a motion to adopt Ordinance 22 dash 2025.
I make a motion that we adopt Ordinance 22 2025.
Second.
And roll call.
Stevenson?
No.
Ori?
No.
Anderson? Fisher?
Yes.
Huber?
Yes.
Murphy? Saad Duchney?
Yes.
Thank you. Was that three yays, two nays?
It doesn't pass.
Did not pass.
This will have to be a special meeting by the end of the month to bring that back.
Okay. Thank you. The next item under new business is Ordinance 23 dash 2025, an ordinance establishing salaries and wages of the civil city employees and appointees for the year 2026. Do we have a motion to consider?
I make a motion to consider Ordinance 23 dash 2025. Second.
And roll call.
Ori?
Uh, yes.
Anderson? Fisher?
Yes.
Huber?
Yes.
Murphy? Saad Duchney?
Yes.
Stevenson?
Yes.
Thank you. This ordinance, this ordinance is for wages throughout the civil city. You have that in front of you, I believe, or have had a chance to review it. Do you have any questions regarding this?
The fire territory, they all got a 15% raise. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
Everybody else, was that 2.5%?
2.5%. Why the, why 15%?
Trying to get the fire department to a competitive wage as we did last year with the police department. We were able to do it last year with the police department and bring their wages up to a competitive salary. And this was the year we could do it for the fire department. Any more questions or discussion regarding Ordinance 23 dash 2025? If not, I would ask for a motion to adopt.
I make a motion that we adopt Ordinance 23 2025.
Second.
And roll call.
Anderson? Fisher?
Yes.
Huber?
Yes.
Murphy? Saad Duchney?
Yes.
Stevenson?
Yes.
Ori?
Yes.
Thank you. The last item on our agenda tonight is Resolution 17 dash 2025, a reduction of appropriation of the debt services fund for year 2025. I will ask Andrea to provide an explanation on this one.
That'll be Nicole.
Or Nicole.
So for the budget year 2025, we had expected to make the two debt service payments of January, that's due in January and July. Due to the funds in the, in the, within the fund, the revenues available in the fund, the January payment was made early in December of 2024. So the full 2025 budget is not going to be spent. And in order to reflect that appropriately and to budget for 2026 and get it back on track, we have to reduce the 2025 budget to reflect that a payment was made early in 2024 so that the payments on 20, in 2026 can go back on schedule with the property tax distributions. So it's reducing the budget rather than increasing just to get the payments back on track for 2026.
Thank you. Everybody understand that? How many questions for Nicole regarding this? Thank you, Nicole. Do we have a motion to consider? I don't think I did that. Resolution 17 dash 2025.
I make a motion we consider Resolution 17 dash 2025.
Second. Second.
And roll call.
Fisher?
Yes.
Huber?
Yes.
Murphy? Saad Duchney?
Yes.
Stevenson?
Yes.
Ori?
Yes.
Anderson?
Thank you. And having heard the explanation from Nicole with Baker Tilly, do you have any more questions regarding this? If not, I would ask for a motion to adopt Resolution 17 dash 2025.
I make a motion that we adopt Resolution 17 2025.
Second.
And roll call.
Huber?
Yes.
Murphy? Saad Duchney?
Yes.
Stevenson?
Yes.
Ori?
Yes.
Anderson? Fisher?
Yes.
Thank you. Nothing more under new business, we'll move to communications. Are there any communications from the council? Communications from the audience? If not, I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
Thank you, this meeting's adjourned.